Now I'd like to call back to order the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Regular Board of Education meeting for March 15th, 2022. And at this time, I'd like to begin our meeting by everyone standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the enthusiastic pledge tonight, and thank you to everyone who's joined this evening, either here in person or is at home watching on the livestream. Last meeting, we included a school spotlight as part of our agenda, and I'm excited that we'll be getting an update from Everett Elementary tonight. As a proud father of two Everett Eagle alumni, I'm excited to hear what's been happening at one of my top three favorite elementary schools in Lake Forest. But before jumping into that update, I did want to briefly comment about our agenda tonight. We have several action items that are regarding administrator roles across our district. It is exciting to see that District 67 is a place where highly qualified educational professionals can come and grow their career. There's one action item, however, that's a little more bittersweet, which is accepting Rebecca Jenkins' resignation, as she accepts a new role as Liberty District 70's new superintendent. Rebecca has worked incredibly hard, particularly over the last two years, in support of Lake Forest kids and families. She has had a significant impact in service to the district's mission to inspire and empower all students to maximize their growth as learners and to develop a balanced sense of self, steadfast resiliency, and a deep respect for others. On behalf of our entire board, boards that came before us and the entire community that we represent, I want to thank you, Rebecca, for everything you've done and wish you all the best in the next step in your own career. And with that, I'm excited to hear what's going on with Everett. Renee?
Yes, please, ma'am.
It's been a long time since I've done this. And on that note, I'm so excited to be here as the amazing, amazing addition to the Everett family. This is a truly, as you know, Mr. England, the most amazing family. We have so much to talk about. I know we're going to go quickly, but I do want to just welcome, we have all of our friends here, and we're gonna, I believe all the pictures are in the slides, correct? Okay, awesome. So in getting started, tonight, we're talking about our whole behavior program, AKA the Eagles Wings sticker program. And we have some of our amazing people here, but we've been looking at this year as an amusement park visit. We are calling ourselves Every Day Everett Land, and every day on the morning announcements, we talk about how Everett Land is. What is Everett Land? You know it. You know it is. So every day, we start our entire morning off with our morning announcements, and we really talk a lot about our SOAR principles that we live by. Tonight, we're going to talk about our friends that we're celebrating through the SOAR awards, but I'm going to really quickly turn this over to Mrs. Fabry, who's going to speak to a few of the elements of our SOAR program.
Hello, I'm Carrie Fabry. I have the greatest position of teaching at Everett with all these magical students. And so I also have the privilege of being on the Foundation's team. And as a team, we worked over the summer and throughout this year, creating our building goals. And one of these goals was really to pull our behavior into alignment. And so we developed a program involving common language between the teachers, and it's self, others, achieving your potential, and responsible decision-making. And so our whole kind of dialogue with kids is always revolving around these words. And so with all the teachers using the same language, it's consistent, and it makes it a lot easier for the kids to follow. So based on these principles, they are part of the Castle Alignment, and it's also based on our social-emotional learning curriculum as well. And so with this program, it's all based on positive interactions with our students. So the kids really are the ones earning all the praise, and they receive a card that has a 10-frame, if you're not familiar with our Bridges program. A 10-frame is a card that has 10 spaces on it, and we doubled it to make it a 20-frame card. There's a little math in there. I hope you're catching along. So as they earn their stickers, they start counting, and they can then go shopping with the stickers they earn, and teachers can earn stickers, too. So they go shopping, and they can use little economics of saving their stickers for a larger prize, or turning them in for something small that they can take home right away. So it's a very tangible system. And at the end, there's going to be a grand prize for the top sticker winner. On Wednesdays, after they turn in their stickers, there's also a Wheel of Wings. So again, they're recognized. There's so many positive places for them to show their great thinking and their great, great behavior. One more thing I want to leave you with is 44,000. I'll say one more time, 44,000. That's the amount of positive interactions that we have collected so far. And so all the credit goes to these kiddos, and we're so proud of them. And I'm going to turn it back over to Renee.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sauser, for also being here. We're happy to have you. And as we get into the real reason we're here, our students, that little basket of those 10-frames are the collected stickers. Those are the ones that have been redeemed for prizes, and you can see we've had some big shopping weeks. And there's one more picture that I don't have in here, but it's the picture of the big minion that I know that Mrs. Hermes is looking to win. And it's been really exciting. That's our grand prize that someone is going to win. So we have some of our friends here that we're celebrating. We have some of our friends that earned a recognition for us for showing the elements of taking care of ourselves, but also self-awareness and self-management, again, aligned with the Castle Competencies. So some of our friends who are here that really represent them, they were really embodying this characteristic. We have Johnny Coe in the front row. Yep, absolutely. We have Arabella May in the second row, yay. We have Corinne Mobius. Corinne Mobius is a second grader. Third grade, we have Annabella Maggiolino, right there in our third row. And in fourth grade, representing and embodying self, Neba Hussein, in our second row. Awesome. We also have friends here with us who have been embodying the "O" in others, taking care of others, understanding how to socially interact and use those relationship skills. Some of those amazing friends that are with us today, we have our fourth grade Hunter Huguesian in the front row. Whoops, Jelou Udichuku, right there in the third row. We have Rocco Dugo in the front row, second grader. We have first grader Dana Hulada, right here in the second row. And in kindergarten, Sophia Damasi, right in the third row, back there. Wonderful. So that is it for our overview of our amazing Eagles Wings program at Everett. Do you have any questions for us or our friends?
I just say, keep up the good work, everybody. Forty-four thousand positive interactions, that's fantastic.
It grows exponentially each week. We're so proud of them. So wonderful. Thank you all for joining us. I'm so proud of you. And yes, keep up the good work. Can we give them one last round of applause?
Perhaps, perhaps we could also have them come up and maybe stand in the front, and we'll take a group picture with all of the students in the Board of Education.
Thank you. Can I also say, this was the most fun report I've ever presented on at the Board.
Totally.
If you're a student who's a part of this tonight, come on up, and we're going to take a picture with you. You can stand in front of us, because you all are the stars. We're the background.
Terrific. Well, thank you so much, Everett Elementary. This is a strategic bit of agenda management. We now see if Dr. Montgomery can follow that. Matt?
I assure you, I cannot. I will tell you this, though. Renee gave me a handful of stickers that she gives out in Everett, and I, maybe they have been hijacked and passed out at someone's disposal whenever she sees fit, where I was really trying to award people for outstanding work, and Mrs. Jenkins may have hijacked that process. And everybody has done an amazing job, which I would agree with her sentiment with that. Okay, so let's jump into the superintendents report. I will not be able to top what Renee was able to do with those wonderful students that joined us, but here are the topics that I'm going to hit on. Organizational changes, which Justin talked about briefly at the beginning, our district pillars, which we're unveiling, we unveiled at APT, talked to the Board tonight in workshop, and then we'll continue to discuss it in the regular session. Portrait of a graduate update, my experience as a seventh-grade student at DPM last week, and then finished with the multicultural fair. So let's start with organizational changes, and there are several. Last week, on Thursday, I sent out a district-wide community announcement announcing these changes, but I just want to highlight them to, or with you tonight. The first one is, as you know, and as Justin reported at the beginning, we're so thrilled for Rebecca and her next venture as the new superintendent of Libertyville District 70. We know she's going to be amazing. This is effective April 1st. Many of you know that Rebecca has served these districts since 2016, and has been an invaluable resource to me as I have embarked, embarked, or continue to embark on this first year at Lake Forest. And I want to wish her the very best as she transitions very quickly into that new role. The next person that I'd like to talk about is Jeff McHugh. Dr. McHugh has been the Director of Teaching and Learning for 67, and he has graciously accepted the position of Deputy Superintendent for both 67 and 115. He was paramount in the strategic planning process for 67. He facilitated key curriculum adoptions, innovated the district's professional development, and furthered the district's inclusive practices. That was instrumental in the redesign of education in District 67. Jeff is known for his strategic mindset, ongoing pursuit of innovative practices, and commitment to educational excellence. He holds a master's degree in education from the University of St. Francis, his endorsement as a library information specialist from the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana, and an advanced degree of education specialist in administration and supervision at National Lewis University, and a doctorate of education from Western Illinois University. That took me a long time to read all the wonderful degrees that you have. And we are eager to have him jump into that role, and he will be partnering with Rebecca in the spring months as she is transitioning to Libertyville, and he assumes these responsibilities on April 1. The next person I would like to highlight is Kate Cavanaugh. Kate is going to be the next principal at Cherokee Elementary effective July 1st of 2022. She actually began her journey in education at Cherokee Elementary 18 years ago, and she was earning her graduate degree in educational specialist in school psychology. She served a nine-month practicum at Cherokee. She then returned to the district in 2013 as the Cherokee School Psychologist, and was named the District Special Education Coordinator in 2017. She was promoted to District 67 Executive Director of Student Services in 2019. I want to take a moment to thank those who participated in our recent focus groups. Your input was thoughtful and thorough, and when we asked about the qualities you were looking for in your next principal, some of you said strong leader, good listener, proactive, excellent communicator, hands-on, values family time, knows students and staff, and is invested in Cherokee. All of this feedback echoes what I learned in my one-on-one meetings with many of you and reaffirms my decision about Kate. And I'm thrilled that she will be joining the team in that role of Cherokee Principal. The next individual that I'll discuss is Joanne Ford Halverson. She started this year, and she will be expanding her roles effective July 1, 2022. Her responsibilities will include supporting the district's early childhood program, facilitating inclusive teaching practices, collaborating with True North, Educational Cooperative 804, and overseeing school safety. Joanne's robust experience makes her an excellent candidate for this broader role. In prior to joining District 67 in July 2021, Joanne was the Director of Early Learning in Buffalo Grove, where she worked since 2014. In that role, she redesigned and directed the early childhood program and collaborated on a new District 102 early childhood curriculum. The last individual I will highlight tonight on the organizational changes is Dr. Jenny Sterpen. Jenny has served as the Director of Special Education for Lake Forest High School since 2016, effective July 1 of 2022. Dr. Jenny Sterpen will transition from District 115 to a shared service role as the Executive Director of Special Education, Compliance, and Grant Management. In her new shared services role, Jenny will support District 67 and 115 building principals in managing special education services. And Jenny will also serve as the district's compliance coordinator for Title IX, the Illinois State Report Card, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, and manage the district's grant application process. I can't say this enough, how proud I am that we are able to offer opportunities for continued growth and career advancements with our folks inside. That means we have wonderful people that come to these districts, and the pathways that we create for them ensures that they are with here, with us for many years to come. I would like to congratulate each and every one of those individuals on the screen, and if we could have a round of applause for all of them. Thank you very much. Moving on to district pillars, this is a new slide that we are going to, you will start hearing more about, and this is really a reflection of the first year here. As we have progressed, and I've learned and listened from many of the stakeholders that I have interacted with, or all of the stakeholders that I've interacted with, but there's four trends that are emerging. And as we have, as we're coming out of the COVID fog, I think it's refreshing to me to be able to talk about things that matter in my educational leadership world. And those four pillars that we are going to focus on are on culture district-wide, teaching and learning, academic growth, and facilities. They are all intertwined with each other, and they are also reflected on the strategic plan. I imagine that we will see them continue to be expanded as the portrait of a graduate process continues, and I will be touching on that next. But again, as we look at how tonight, when we look at the assessment report from the Board Workshop, how we looked at specifically the coaching programs that we're doing for teachers to support the learning that's happening, the Mandarin program that we're offering, these are the types of topics that we should be engaged in, and we should be laser-focused on as we continue to create pathways for continual improvement within the district. A quick moment on the Portrait of a Graduate. The first design meeting occurred, and we had, it was on March 3rd, and approximately 150 people participated in that event. Suzanne, thank you for participating and being a part of it. It was an energy that was palpable across the district or districts, because there's three of them coming together, which is pretty special. You could feel it in the air, and I was really, I was energized. I walked away feeling the energy that was within that environment. Tiana, can you see if you can push the button so that starts playing as I'm talking through this? So one of the additional highlights from this process is that we had an artist from the Ink Factory who was participating in the meeting with us, taking real-life graphic depictions of what was happening in the conversation. And that happened throughout the meeting, and will continue to happen through the four meetings that will occur. The first portion of the meeting on the third was to talk about how the workforce and pace of change have evolved, and how that then translates into teaching and learning, or educational spaces. So you can see things that we talked about as far as collaboration and innovation, finding a passion for learning, and how we will hopefully transform education as we continue to process how the world around us and society is changing and evolving. The second two areas of landscape shifts that we focused on were talking about the need for global interaction and human interaction. Can you advance me one, because it's, please, sorry, we're on repeat here, and I, my clicker is not, there we go. Global and human interaction. This is where the crowd, the crowd, the design team came to life, and this is what was resonating with them in a big way, talking about how our students, how we should create learning opportunities to prepare them to be successful within the way in which they interact with each other as humans, and also globally. And you can talk about, or you can see how they focused on creating meaning through building purpose, building relationships, finding a way to have relevant and respectful curriculum that informs the students and teachers of how to interact with the constant deluge of information that they have access to. How do we, how do we create environments where they can critically talk to each other about issues that they may or may not agree on? So how do you have that candid dialogue that I think that we have lost in some regards over the last, especially over the last 24 months? So to tell you that I'm excited about that process would be an understatement, because I'm looking for ways to transform the opportunities that we are offering our students. Another way that I am taking in data is something that I've done in my previous districts, and shadowed a high school student a couple of weeks ago, and last week, spent some time with Aiden, and I went to English Language Arts, I went to his French class, I went to his math class, and it's me just sitting next to the student in the classroom and just following them along. And I want to thank Aiden and his family for allowing me to partner up with him. He was spectacular, so much fun to be around, and I learned about his experiences as he went through his coursework, and I even had a chance to, you know, interact with the lessons. I, my performance level was better than that in my high school classes, although Aiden was especially joyful when I was struggling remembering the slope formula and how to put that on the whiteboard. But I did remember eventually with his help, and also the help from Mrs. McHugh, who was gracious enough to be patient with the student who was struggling for moments around that formula. These types of experiences reiterate the importance of student agency, student voice, and how we need to lean into those stakeholders for which we make decisions for and about on a day-to-day basis. And I think the more connected we are with the student experience, the better we will be apt to make decisions that are truly in the best interest of the students we have the pleasure of serving. The last topic in the report is really just a shout-out to a wonderful event that was at Cherokee on Wednesday, March 9th, so last week. We had over 150 attendees and more than a dozen cultures represented, including Ukraine. Families showcased different pictures of landscapes, or famous landmarks, flags, interesting historical facts, special holidays, or religious traditions, famous people, words from other languages. We are proud to celebrate and learn about all of the district families, and this night was a wonderful way to come together and celebrate each other, and really embody some of the things that we were talking about in the Portrait of a Graduate work. So it was a real-life example of how we celebrate each other from a global perspective, and I want to thank all the families and volunteers who came together. I also want to extend a special thank you to our food service provider, Quest Food, who generously offered samples of Greek chicken for attendees that, while I wasn't there to try, I was told was fantastic. And Jeff's thumbs up that he enjoyed it, and I can't wait for the next one. So that concludes my superintendents report, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to share it with you. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. If not, we can progress with the meeting.
Thank you. Matt, I've got a question. So I presume you shadowed students in prior districts as well. Anything stand out to you in comparison for shadowing a student District 67? Positive opportunity for our district?
So I don't know if anything stands out as different. Every time I shadow a student, I get a glimpse into the classroom that I would not have gotten without that experience. So I don't know if there's anything in particular that stands out, other than a reinforcement of how hard our teachers are working to meet the needs of the diversity of needs within each classroom, and how they are continually going above and beyond to make sure that their needs are exceeded. That was refreshing to me. The energy, I think some of the teachers were a little nervous that I was there, and yet they quickly forgot that I was there, and you could just see them shine. And that was heartwarming to see them interact, and the students having a good time in their learning experience.
Thanks. Any other questions for Matt?
Just have an observation, really, just rather than a question, that everything in your report, I mean, the Portrait of the Graduate and the pillars, so positive. And it does feel like this moment where we're starting to get out of the fog, like you said, and move in the right direction, and really focus on the things that are so important for us to focus on. So I want to say thank you for that, and that I'm really excited about the work that we have to come.
Me, too, and I can't say that enough. I talked to the APT group last week, and I said, I feel like I am putting off, or putting away my honorary epidemiologist coat, and back to the business that I love so much, and it is filling my bucket back when I was atrophying a little bit with energy after 24 months leading in that type of environment. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Matt. We'll now move to our first opportunity for public participation. As a reminder, this is our first opportunity. I would request that everybody keep comments related to action items or agenda items this evening. Please know that public comment is subject to Board Policy 2-230. We welcome public attendance and participation at all of our meetings, and we hope that by utilizing some of these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization, given that I'm not seeing a ton of people here tonight. I'm not going to reiterate all these guidelines point by point, but at this point in the evening's agenda, I welcome anyone who has a comment for the public, and Tiana, our board clerk, will be timing. Would anybody like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move to the reports section of our agenda, and we'll begin with an assessment update from Michelle Shin. Michelle?
Well, Tiana's looking, Tiana, looking for the report. I, just following up on Dr. Montgomery's comment about his epidemiology degree, when all of the administrators were on a screen last week, walking through the administrators at all the changes, they kind of came down, I was sitting down there saying, okay, and I was last, because I don't really have any changes, but I did announce that due to all of my knowledge gained in other areas, that I would like to also put aside that I was going to work for the Lake County Health Department. And Megan Eigenreul thought that was serious, so I am not, and I, it was, it was about the only thing I could think of, other than I'm just going to be able to do my job. So it's kind of nice to feel like we're out of the fog. It feels like we might be moving into a really good time. So I would, I will be staying in 67. I do not want to work for the Health Department. I do not want to work for the Health Department. Now the slides. Jordan grabbed the slides. Assessment update, 31522, I believe. Do you have yours? This is going to be a very short report. Do you want to switch to Jeff? Jeff?
Paging Dr. McKeown. Dr. Jeff McKeown. Hey Jeff, we're gonna, we're gonna start with the strategic plan update while we find Michelle's presentation.
If we're not able to pull it up, is Michelle off the hook? All right. Well, thanks for having me. I'm going to try to keep this very tight. There's been a lot of work going on, on our strategic plan behind the scenes. This is not my work. This is the work of, I think, all of the directors, Michelle included, Kate Kavanaugh, Joanne Ford Halverson, certainly under Rebecca's guidance, and then going down to the building principals and the teachers. But we're just going to give you updates on about 10 snippets from the strategic plan and I'm going to go quickly through them all and then we'll take questions at the end. So there are three goal areas on the strategic plan. And Tiana, if we could advance this one. Oh, I've got the clicker. There we, I've got the power. And there are three goal areas. The first goal is inclusive practices. And for each of these slides, I want to direct your eye to the left side. What's in the box is the goal area that we've been working on behind the scenes. So academic growth for all students. Under inclusive practices, our goal is to keep all K8 students with IEPs inside the general education setting at least 80% of the day. And last year, we had 82% of the students. This year so far, 85.9% of students with IEPs are in the general education classroom for 80% or more of their day. The reason this is important is because it's giving those kids a feeling of membership and belonging in the school. And we have wonderful supports. It takes a lot of collaboration between teachers and special education teachers and teaching assistants. But our staff is doing a wonderful job of this and we are continuing to do professional learning and thoughtful with our supports to continue to support students inside the Gen Ed classroom. Also, under inclusive practices, we have a partnership with the Maryland Coalition for Inclusive Education. And through that partnership, we are trying to document a process for natural proportion scheduling. What that means is we have a lot of great resources and we have a lot of students with needs. We're trying to make equitable use of our resources so that student needs in all classrooms in a grade level are met. We haven't had a process for that in the past. We tried it last year and as you'll see in progress, last year was a little bit crazy. And it didn't go as planned and we talked to the teachers about it and we heard what worked, what didn't work. We started earlier, I think last year, we didn't get a start until March or April. We began this process in January and all of, all of our buildings now are working with not only the MCIE, but they're working with our principals, our district administrators, but more importantly, the teachers in putting together structures to make sure that all kids are supported in all classrooms. Another goal area under inclusive practices is multi-tiered systems of support. That's something Dr. Shin is our fearless leader on. And basically what that means is when there are student needs, you might have seen it as a triangle. And the bottom level, tier one, what are some universal supports we can give when kids are struggling academically or behaviorally that will benefit most kids? If students are still struggling more, then you go to a tier-two intervention. And then at the very top, if there's intensive support needs, those are called our tier-three interventions. We've been doing this in the district for years. However, we're looking to get more systematized procedures in place that Dr. Shin is helping us with. And I think at the March MTSS Committee, you're going to be finalizing a data review process that all of our buildings are using. And also, there's going to be a district MTSS manual ready for publication in May, I believe, right? So very exciting work. And one final inclusive practices area to highlight, early childhood is a really big deal that I'm not sure how many people outside of Sheridan know. This program has gone, it has, let me take a step back. Our goal is that we have 100% of the early childhood students with disabilities are educated inside the setting, again, at least 80% of the day. And this program has doubled since last year. We have 47 students currently in this program. A huge change from when Dr. Shin was there and probably in the twenties, I would, I would anticipate with the number of students. And we have met that goal so far. We have proportionate classes and 100% of the students with disabilities are in the Gen Ed classroom for most of their day. Very exciting work.
Dr. McKeown, can you explain what you mean by proportionate classes?
It means that we have two early childhood classrooms. There are students in the morning and afternoon. And if there are students with, who have significant support needs, we're not having all of those students in the same classroom. We're having students with support needs in all different classrooms and then structuring our supports to make sure that their needs are met. I have a feeling you knew that. That was for everyone's benefit, right? We're going to move into, this is my wheelhouse, this is teaching and learning, to a couple areas of curriculum review. I'm not going to go into detail on the curriculum review cycle, but there are four steps. We review every curricular area approximately once every five years. And as you'll see, research is phase one, where we look at best practices. We see what our data is telling us. Phase two, we're looking at our resources and our schedules. Phase three, we decide on some changes. We implement them, monitor the changes. And phase four, we evaluate the resource. And one of the big ones going on is a K8 reading review. This is the biggest review going on in the district currently and since my time here. Basically, what we're doing is we're looking to see what changes in the reading curriculum, in our resources, in our instructional practices, in our professional learning are going to be needed to bump up the percentage of kids meeting the benchmark. We know that our reading test scores aren't where we want them to be. And we are doing a deep dive. We thought we would do it all this year. We are stretching it into next year. And the reason is there's been a lot of research in recent years that not only do I need to know, our teachers need to know it. So one of the things that we're doing, when we say review research and best practices, we have a group of teachers at the K4 and 58 level who are engaging in the learning with us. They're reading articles, they're reading books. We're getting together, we're talking about best practices and what the research says so that next year, when we move into phase two, we're all talking about best practices in science. We're not talking about, I like something because this is what I use. So it's extremely exciting work. It's taking longer than we anticipated, but I promise you, the result that we get is going to pay off because our entire teaching body, the administrators, and in time, we're going to communicate this to families as well. We'll be up with the latest and greatest on reading and there has been a lot in recent years about that. Why not do math too? 68 math is something that's also under review. And this is something we're looking at specifically, we use Connected Math right now, CMP. And that's another area, we're looking at our data and we feel like it could be stronger. And our goal is we're going to conduct a math review and look at what changes are needed. Is it a different resource? Is it different practices? What are some other pieces we need to look at? We have narrowed, we looked extensively at the resources that are out there. We've talked to other districts. The two that we've really honed in on that we wanted to take a look at are called illustrative and then CPM, which is very similar to CMP in terms of its acronym, but it's a different, it's a different program altogether. Our math teachers are trialing the resources. Becky Saxina, our district math coaches too. And if you have a student that was unfortunate enough to get me teaching their math class, I apologize, it was just for a day. But I've also been trialing these materials because I feel like if I'm going to ask teachers to do this and I want to feel what it's like for myself, so far I have taught four math classes. And I don't think I've completely crashed and burned, but it's been a great experience for me to have the feeling of what these resources are really like. We do expect to have a recommendation for you in May about what direction we want to go for this. Instructional coaching is something I feel like I, and I can't stop talking about it. It's extremely exciting that we have district coaches and building coaches as well. And really, our goal is we're, we're in our infancy of the coaching program and we are looking now to just get people on board with what is coaching. Get staff familiar with, coaches are a resource for you. More and more staff are tapping into our coaches. We're looking at, as you see with our progress, increasing the skills of our coaches through professional learning, increasing staff utilization. At Dear Path, our two building coaches have connected professionally with all 100 or so staff members across all content areas. Most importantly though, coaches are here to support student outcomes. So when coaches do coaching cycles with, with teachers, we want to see improved student outcomes through a coaching cycle, meaning you start with data, the coach and the teacher work together, you take, you take data at the end and you see what worked and what could be changed. Heterogeneous ELA classes is something that was started several years ago and we are just wrapping it up now. So we do have ELA classes that are heterogeneously grouped, grades five through eight. And we have two advanced learning specialists, Laura Paul and Mary Courtney. We want to make sure that they're working with teachers and kids in order to ensure that students who have advanced learning needs are being challenged. And as of right now, our advanced learning specialists have supported all of the ELA teachers. We're looking for ways that we can continue to improve upon that. This is the, this is really the first year we've had an advanced learning specialist support at all the grade levels. And that means they're co-planning and co-teaching, they're providing resources, they're actually working with students too. But we're excited about ways that we can continue to, we want to make sure, I, I know sometimes the focus is on who are the students that are struggling. We also need to shine a spotlight on what are students that need more and how can we support teachers and those students in that effort? And finally, safety and security. This goes under goal three, behavioral systems of support. We're looking at our physical environments right now. Joanne Ford Halverson is really steering this work. And she has done an amazing job bringing professional learning in about the ICS, an incident command structure, that we're training all staff on. So district administration receives staff first, building principals. And then now it's going down to, there are teams at all the buildings that in the event of a crisis, we want everyone to be sure that they're prepared and know what to do. This is going to be ongoing, but Joanne has done a nice job kicking that off. She's also working closely with Dan Mortenson. And safety and security is something that I think it flies under the radar, but it is maybe the most important thing that we do. We want to make sure we're getting your kids back to you safely. I don't know if I hit 10 minutes, but that's it, so I'll take questions now.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there questions from the board for Jeff? I have a question, Jeff. Can you say more? My understanding, at the middle school, so you talked about heterogeneous learning for ELA, but we still have different classes and levels for math. Can you just speak to the difference there and why we're taking one approach for LA and a different one for math?
Yes. That's a great question. I'm going to try to give you, the short answer is, in terms of heterogeneous ELA, it was, I think it was more easily made heterogeneous because of the structure. What was being taught in the classes weren't building on each other the same way that in math. Math is so foundational, if you take out one piece right there, you're not going to be able to continue. There are a lot of different courses we have in math at the middle school, which then feeds into the high school. With ELA, it started at the elementary where we were able to become more heterogeneous and it made it, I think, a little bit more seamless at the middle school. Although it's still a challenge, we want to make sure kids are being challenged if they have advanced learning needs. For math, it's something that I think is going to come up during this curriculum review and into the future of, do we have the appropriate math classes? There's, there's a lot of math six, math six, seven, math seven, eight. And there's students in different grades taking different classes. I think that's a question I still have about what is the right structure for that moving forward. I know the high school is looking at, I shouldn't say I know, I believe the high school is, is looking at how do we have more heterogeneous math classes? How do we get more kids that rigor? And I think this will be a question that comes up as we move into this math review of looking at our, all the different classes we have.
Is there any data from other, our comparable districts or just more broadly outside of our comp districts of people who take a heterogeneous model or those who don't and how that correlates to overall growth data for the district?
We haven't gotten to that point yet. We don't have that data that would show. I, I also think there are more heterogeneous districts when it comes to ELA and probably more, fewer heterogeneous districts when it comes to math. I think that's from my experience, what I've seen in the two. But I think that would be great data to look at.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Michelle, take two.
As I was watching Jeff at this microphone, I thought this is, this was made for Jeff. It's very tall. Okay, there we go. All right, so in December, Dr. McKeown provided an assessment update regarding student performance in the fall as we opened our schools to all-in every day. So this update is really a mid-year snapshot of student growth and performance as well as some information regarding summer school that we held last June of 2021, as there were questions from the board about that. So the update really answers three questions. One, was there a decrease at, at-risk student performance from fall 2021 to winter of 2021 in reading, math, and social emotional wellbeing? So we started the year with looking at the key indicators that we have right off the bat to see where were students coming in. And I can provide you some background on where the students are mid-year in that. These data are a couple of months old, so we're a little further along in the process. So just keep in mind, winter was December and January. So we're hoping that we're in spring right now. The second question was how do student growth and proficiency levels compare in reading and math from winter of 2020 to winter of 2021 as measured by the NWEA? So we now have a year's growth on a measure from the middle of the pandemic, hybrid in-person years, to being halfway through a year of all-in person. So taking a look at our performance over that year, year 2020 to 2021. And then what was really the potential summer impact, the impact of summer school? So I'll provide information to answer those three questions. I just want to go back to, I'm, I'm still looking for the pillars. They look like four leaves, but I'm just going to leave that to Dr. Montgomery. But it looks lovely. But just kind of taking us back to, as he mentioned in his opening, the work of the district will be focused under these four pillars. Culture, teaching and learning, facilities, and academic growth. And currently, there is a lot of important work being done in all of these areas. And the use of student performance data to inform our efforts under two of these pillars, teaching and learning and our student growth, academic growth, will be instrumental in guiding our work both for this year and in upcoming years. So I'm excited to be a part of the pillar leaves. This updated, so this update includes some key takeaways to answer the three questions that I mentioned previously and select graphics. There are a lot of other graphics in your board report and more details, but I just wanted to hit on some highlights as we go through answering those three questions.
For the record, Dr. Shin, I did inform the board that we're getting closer to the landing on the graphic. Every step a little bit closer. So thank you for your feedback.
I think it's lovely.
Thank you.
It would be a better drawing than I would make. But whatever you come up with, it's, it's great. I'm excited about the, the four, whatever, whatever you want to call them. The four areas are great. So some key takeaways, looking at academics, our data from grades K8 and these are all fast-bridge data. We had fewer at-risk students in winter of 2021 as compared to fall in early reading for K1, CBM reading two and, grades two and four, and then math cap across all of those grades. So we had a couple of grades that had similar numbers in the fall of 2021 as they do in the winter. That includes our early math combined for K and one and then our third graders in CBM reading, which is a group that was impacted right in the middle of their reading instruction, early literacy skills. So we are definitely taking a look, a closer look at that. And then we did have an increase in the number of students that are performing above the 85th percentile. So starting to see some of those gaps close. So above the 85th percentile, grades K and one on early reading, grades two through four on CBM reading, and grades two through eight on math cap. So I just selected some of these graphics. You have all of them for the grades in your board report, but our early reading, what we're really looking at is the students that are in the yellow and the red. The yellow is the 20 to the 29. The yellow is the 20 to the 29th percentile, and the red, the first through the 19th. Are we closing that gap? Are those areas getting smaller? And then as we look toward the students above the 85th percentile, are we growing kids and moving them out of those areas? So this pattern is somewhat consistent for our reading, our second graders. Some nice growth there. Our third graders here, what you see from fall to winter is that our overall numbers in those two categories are relatively similar. We have, a few of our kids have popped into the yellow at-risk range, but we're not quite seeing the shift as we have in some of the other grades. But we'll continue to work with, our school teams have worked pretty collaboratively with our third grade teachers. There's a lot of co-teaching and a lot of efforts to try to shore up this group of students to ensure that they're ready and prepared for fourth grade. Early math, we have, you can see a little bit of a decrease in the red, but a little in the yellow. It's still relatively similar for those students. And then our math cap scores across all of the grades had quite a big jump in terms of the at-risk students decreasing and the number of students performing above the 85th percentile rising. So just a sample of some of those data. With respect to social emotional status, we looked at our Fastbridge learning data from the Social, Academic, and Emotional Risk Screener, or SABERS. So we administer this K through eight. In K-4, the SABERS is done through teacher ratings. So teachers read the items and rate students based on their experience with the students. And in grades five through eight, students actually complete it online. It's a 20-item survey. And students have a scale of rating. They're asked, they're given different scenarios and have to recall something that happened in the past month. And the ratings are never, sometimes, often, and almost always. And the items correspond to various risk factors suggested by developmental psychology research to predict development of emotional behavioral disorders. So some key takeaways, and then I'll show you the data and the risk factors. As overall, a majority of our students have rated, this is a mouthful, but they're considered not at risk or rated themselves not at risk. From winter 2020 to winter 21, so we have a year, winter to winter time period here. On the overall ratings for K-8, and there are three subscales, academic, social, and emotional social, they were not at risk, rated themselves as not at risk on the academic and social ratings K-8. So the one that stood out was about 60% of our students from winter 20 to winter 2021 rated themselves as at risk on the emotional scale for grades five, eight. So this has been, I'll show you a graphic of that here. Just to go over some of the risk factors that we're looking for. Internalizing behaviors are things that you can't really see. But negative behaviors that are focused inward for students, such as anxiety and depression. And then externalizing behaviors that are easily observable, negative behaviors that are directed outward, such as aggression, bullying, and defiance. So just a snapshot, you can see the pattern here. Overall, SCL ratings K-8, K-4 and 5.8. The pattern is about 90% of our students are rated as not at risk and around 10%, give or take a few kids, relatively consistent over the last four periods. So we do this three times a year. So you're looking at two data points from last school year and two from this year. So it's a very consistent pattern here. With our social subscale and our academic subscale and our emotional subscale, you can see the same pattern repeat itself. About roughly 90% of our students not at-risk ratings, 10 to 12% is at-risk. And then you see in K-8, we get a change in the distribution. So we took these data and parsed them out from K-4 and 5.8 and find that the majority of that change in that graph is coming from our 5.8 side with about 60, 65% of our students that have consistently rated themselves as at-risk. So talk about what we're doing with that. Sure.
That's focused on 5.8. Do you have any historical data of that? I mean, those are teenagers going through puberty, so that's a real rough time anyway.
Right. So there are a number of ways to look at this, Carl. So we do have, as far back as winter of 2020, this is a relatively new one. So we at least have four time periods that are consistent. But yes, I think there are a number of things that we are looking at. One is, when you give an assessment like this to teenagers, how is the assessment being presented with the kids? Sometimes we're, you know, at Dear Path, we use video to introduce, or we may have to spend more time actually talking through the importance of this and how to accurately rate what they're doing. The other is when you ask somebody about something that happened in the past month. Sometimes not all of our kids, if something really vivid happened to them, whether it happened a month ago or six months ago, that might still be rated. So one of them is, are we ensuring that our kids have a good test environment and understand what the purpose of this is? Because yes, they are teenagers, and sometimes they do, they may not always. I can't say for sure they're doing that. But I think the other reality of this is, is we have to look beyond that and say, these are the data that we have. So we have looked with our school-based teams. We went through all of our kids that were rated at-risk and looked at individual students. And we looked historically at ratings. So we have students that showed up this year that did not have historical information. So those were kind of a different category where we had students that consistently were rating themselves lower in those areas. So kind of tried to prioritize levels of need. And then also looked at other risk factors, such as nurses' visits, other things that might, you know, attendance, things at school that might also be complicating factors for kids. Parents were all notified if students were in this. And so they had, there was a conversation, and our social workers have reached out to all of them in terms of what types of support we need and resources for kids. Some of our parents said, "Thank you," asked for resources and wanted to manage it themselves. Others, you know, asked the school to help and intervene. So we have the group level information here. We also have individual students. And then Dear Path has made a concerted effort this year to take strands from this assessment and do whole-school activities. So I think I have it in my March, they have Olympics coming. Hallway Olympics have to do with one of the topics, I think I've got it on my key takeaways. But they're trying to get some themes around student connectedness. Accepting feedback, I believe, was March. Just things that they're doing in homeroom and activities throughout the school to make this whole school. So we're coming at it from a whole-school, targeted, and then we do have some individual students. So I do think this is something that we have to consider as a group. Problem solving at the foundations level, as well as what is our balance at Dear Path? And what are we getting from these items? So, good question. It's interesting that the pattern is fairly consistent across this. So going into this, I would have thought it might have been different during the pandemic versus here. But I also see that these are kids in fifth through eighth grade, and this is a time where many of them, being the parent of an eighth grader, I'm not sure which child I'm going to get each day and what's going to happen so I can understand the variability in what we get from students, even grading from fall to winter. So it's a good question. Some key takeaways in terms of our academic growth. I don't know if there are any other questions about SABERS. I'm kind of jumping from a, okay. So math, we do have our math data from winter to winter. The good news is, right now, we've met expected growth for the district, school, and all of our grade levels in reading and math. So we're on track at that point. We did see a high percentage of our students, a larger percentage of students in the high-growth area in reading and math at the district level. The same pattern was found for four out of the five schools and seven out of nine grades. So it looks like kids kind of took off, perhaps with being in school a little bit longer. We do have, you know, our lower-growth ranges that we're looking at. But it was an interesting trend to see with our data that our kids are starting to pick up, I think, with covering more ground in time with learning. So, summer school. The purpose of summer school are really, I think, when we put this together last year was to, I think, as an ask for many of our parents, which was having more time, instructional time in the classroom, opening it up to anyone having that social connectedness, being able to continue that a little bit longer into the school year, being in person. We were hoping we would be somewhat maskless, but we did get to do that at RESA, so I guess that was a good ask. But I looked at the data for, we had a couple of groups. We had a K-4 group that was in a math, that did math and reading together. So they did both of these classes while they were there each day. And then we had a group that was 4.8 math. So about 100 kids in the K-4 group and about 46 in the math group. And what I looked at are the spring data for Fastbridge and the fall data. These were the two data sources we had that we could compare and really looked at their risk status. How did they end the year? What was their risk level? And how did they begin the fall year? That's, and really, the risk status was very similar from spring to fall. And I did look at the data for the rest of the district. And this is a very similar pattern when you look at just anyone across the district. So students, there were 74, this is the math K-4 group. This was the most divergent from, when I say fairly, fairly, or fairly similar, this was the most divergent of the three groups. The other groups are almost similar across the numbers in each of the categories. So in the spring, we had 74 students that were low-risk, and 63 of those students started the school year as low-risk. This is a pretty typical pattern. When you go from the spring of one school year and you come in in the fall, you have this thing called summer. And we also, in the fall, will use grade-level materials. So you end the year testing on second-grade material and you begin the year testing on third-grade material. So it's fairly typical to see a little bit of a dip. 16 students at some risk and 26 came in in the fall as some risk. And then our students who were at high risk pretty much held their own. There wasn't a lot of difference, which to me is a, given this, the needs of students in this range to actually come in holding, you know, their own, not adding to this, was a pleasant surprise. And that was consistent across reading K-4 as well as our math 4.8. So our next steps. We have been working really hard this year to create a data meeting system that allows us to look at data formatively, not just when data comes in and we look at it three times a year. So we're going to continue our weekly grade-level data meetings to review whole-group and small-group needs based on student performance. We've had a lot of, a lot of really good discussions about how to structure these and getting our grade-level teachers used to looking at data on an ongoing basis with our specialists. We'll continue our formative assessment and review individual students receiving intensive support to ensure the effectiveness of intervention. So we've got still some time left in the school year to keep looking at what's happening with kids who need additional support. School teams will be reviewing growth status for all of their students. When we get our map data back, we can actually look at growth and status for kids and having, using that information to identify intervention needs for students that are especially, our students in the low-growth range. Continue monthly SCL lessons at DPM to address areas of needs. March lessons addressed accepting feedback. The April lessons are hallway Olympics related to, I forget which one that is. I have it on my phone, but lots of Stu Crew is planning this. So they're thematic each month for those areas of needs from the SABERS. And then we do need to continue and follow up with parents and students that A, have historically at-risk ratings on the SABERS and have other red flag indicators to provide resources and support. This will be an ongoing discussion, I think, with our DPM teams to ensure that we can try and shift that trajectory around for our kids, even if for a little bit. And that concludes my report. I just have additional graphs, but I can answer questions.
For number five, does that continue through the summer? Is that what you're indicating, next steps? At-risk kids?
It can. I think that can definitely be a conversation. We do have summer school. I think we are planning to do summer school. And I do think if we have kids that are at risk to the point where summer is a barrier, those can be discussions individually with the school-based team on how to manage that.
Thank you.
Other questions for Michelle?
I think this might have just been an oversight, but this presentation was not included in our board materials. I think the last time you presented, I really dug in over the weekend before the board meeting was really able to.
Oh.
And so I think, I just want to make sure it's up there for the public as well.
Sure.
Because I think this is really important.
I know Tiana has it, so.
I just want to say, I thought it was really good information. Thank you for sharing it.
Thank you.
My only comment is, upon reflection, we traditionally have had this one ginormous assessment report that we hear about once during the year. And due to circumstances beyond our control, we've had these smaller pieces of sort of a more meaningful, I think, deep dive. And honestly, I would like to just leave you wondering if maybe multiple touchpoints during the year would be more useful to us and to the community over time as opposed to just hearing about how kids are doing once a year.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Michelle. We're going to move to board reports.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, we will begin our first committee report with the Education Committee. Suzanne?
The Education Committee has not met, but will be meeting on May 5.
Thank you, Suzanne. Finance and Ops, Alice?
Hi, thanks. The Finance and Operations Committee did meet on February 23 here at West Campus. We had a guest speaker, Betsy Allen from Miller's Cooper &amp; Company, the audit firm. So at the meeting, we first approved the minutes from our last meeting held October 27, 2021. And we also approved the Finance and Operations Charter. The focus of the February meeting was on three topics. The annual audit, student fees, and a CPI update. Highlights of our meeting included the 2021 financial statement audit results. Betsy Allen from Miller's Cooper shared the annual independent audit findings with the committee. Miller's Cooper provided School District 67 with an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of insurance that we can be given. There will be a single audit opinion issued at a later date for $750,000 in federal funds received relating to COVID last year. Two changes highlighted for 2021 and 2022 are, student activity fees were required to be reported in the General Education Fund, and there will no longer be differences between capital and operating leases greater than 12 months going forward. Just additional notes, there was a control deficiency for two late deposits, and the audit itself was delayed due to COVID and short staffing. The audit was released and submitted on time, February 15, 2022, and met all the required guidelines for filing without penalty. We would like to thank Jen, Katie, Mike, and all who helped to get this done under trying conditions. Student fees, there continues to be a focus on reducing the cost of bus transportation fees and other student fees. Bus transportation fees for next year will be a two-fee category, one for single ridership and the other for family ridership. In addition, there will be a flat student fee of $165 for all the students, all the grade levels, rather than different fees for different grades. The district continually benchmarks against peer districts and is committed to reviewing fees to reduce them whenever possible. We also briefly discussed CPI, the Consumer Price Index. Jen provided us with an update on CPI with a 7% inflation rate announced in December. And I think now it's 8%, I just recently heard. So it's going in the wrong direction. But that being said, the maximum tax cap for CPI is 5% or whichever is lower. So since CPI, the Consumer Price Index, now exceeds the 5% tax cap, we need to have this monitored and evaluated for next fall. Normally, 1.75% is used for five-year projections. If we change that to 5%, along with increased expenditures, it will have a significant impact on our financial forecasting for the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice. Are there any questions from the board for Alice? Seeing none, we'll get an update from Rich on policy.
We have not amended policies, so there's no update. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. We will now move to liaison reports, and we'll start with True North. Suzanne?
Yeah, first, I'm going to correct my mistake. Thank you, Dr. McQ, for mouthing to me. April 7 is our next Education Committee meeting. I was just skipping over one. So for those of you who just thought you were off the hook, we do have a meeting on April 7. And he and I are meeting tomorrow to make sure that we finalize the agenda. So on to True North. True North Leadership Council met on March 9. A couple of highlights from that meeting, you can read about the rest of it in the report. One of the pieces of work that's going on there that I'm very excited about is the Township High School District 113 Transition Program space is a collaboration between True North and that district to serve students in True North's transition program, which very many of them happen to come from District 113. But they've been working with the Highland Park Chamber over the last few years to increase student employment in that program. And now they actually have a space in downtown Highland Park that is going to be sort of a home base for that program. And students and staff should begin to be using it in May. And the reason that this is so exciting is because when we put students in the community and emphasize employment at that level, that's what should be happening in transition. and emphasize employment at that level, that's what should be happening in transition programs. Students who are in those programs should be connected to their community. They should be able to find employment within their community. And this is a really exciting trend that is happening. Maybe it will spread to the rest of the North Shore. The Leadership Council also has a professional development section in each of our meetings. And this time, we had someone from the APS Board, which is True North's parent board, come and speak about her personal experience with having her daughter be included in the Deerfield School System. And it was really helpful to board members. And board members had a lot of questions and a lot of interest in engaging in that because it is the crux of the work that we do. And so the APS Board is open and welcoming to parents from all districts whose students may be accessing services either within their districts or within True North. And they have a family newsletter that comes out that I know we link on our website. And I would encourage parents to take a look at that because there are just amazing resources that are published in that newsletter on a regular basis around community resources, community events, parent educational events that are taking place in our community and other communities that I know there are parents within our community who would find some of that information helpful. So I would encourage people to click on that link on our website or maybe it's even at the bottom of our Friday Flyers now, too, so you can find it there as well. But that's what that is. Finally, we're in a strategic planning process and we heard an update from Dr. Brian Harris of HYA, who is leading that process for us. And we were talking about essential questions and about the team that he has put together, which is a pretty remarkable team, and what the timeline might look like. And we passed a memorandum of understanding between our Teachers Assistance Association and the Cooperative, the details of which are here. But to just give you an idea, we created some career pathways. We created a different starting salary range. And Dr. Snyder called me the next day and said, "We changed people's lives last night." When he was able to announce to the staff what was happening with that, the impact that it potentially has on a group of employees that are critical to our students as well as to the way that they collaborate with staff, the way that they support administrators and the way that they support students. So exciting times at True North. Happy to take any questions. Our next meeting is, oh, good gracious, April 14th.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions from the board for Suzanne? Seeing none, Carl, we want to give an update on Springfield.
Happy to. So my report today is, we'll cover the last, the last couple sessions from the Congress and legislating. A full summary of both Ed Redd and ISB's report can be found at the back of this report. There's a lot going on, a lot of different things. But I'm going to summarize three bills, four bills that are, really have more of an immediate effect. First one is House Bill 1167, which is a COVID school employee benefit and wage protection bill that came out with amendments last week. Under the language, the employees must be fully vaccinated to receive the administrative COVID leave. There will be a five-week window for unvaccinated employees to become fully vaccinated to receive the benefits. But Ed Redd expressed some specific concerns on how this legislature is going to impact the school districts, both financially and then with staffing shortages. And that this is moving pretty fast. It already got through the House and it's expected to pass the Senate in the next couple of weeks. So look for those immediate impacts to the schools sometime soon. The next one is House Bill 5060 and Senate Bill 3983, and this lowers a threshold for teachers obtaining tenure from four years to three years. There is some concern that this would negatively impact teacher quality and administrators' ability to effectively support and evaluate new teachers. Both bills are on hold at this time. There's some negotiation going on, so keep your eye on that one. The last one, this is really for the taxpayers here, the Senate Bill 2298 intends to reform the TIF PTEL. And this, a quick summary is, this bill allows districts to provide short-term tax relief without impacting the long-term financial health of the local taxing body. Essentially, what it does is it allows the taxing, taxing body to, the ability to reevaluate the tax levy over five past years and adjust as they see fit. So you don't have to take the maximum tax levy each year. You can kind of adjust it as you see fit. You can lower the tax levy and adjust it later on to make up for any maybe lost, lost revenue there. So this bill remains in the Senate with two floor amendments pending, so expect more information to come out of that one. That is, again, that's, that's, like I said, it affects everybody within the community here. So again, a lot going on. These are all quick-moving things, or attachments, amendments all the time, so stay tuned. So pending any questions you may have, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Carl. Any question for Carl? Seeing none, Rich, I know you have an update on the spirit.
I sure do. The Spirit of 67 held its "The Spirit is Sweet" on Our Students Event the week of February 14th, Valentine's Day week. There was an online auction and grant open houses at each school. Parents enjoyed being welcomed to the schools and seeing firsthand how students utilize many of the granted items awarded by the Spirit of 67. Thanks to the wonderful generosity and support of our district teachers, administrators, and families, the Spirit of 67 raised over $21,000 to funds enriched, to fund enrichment programs that impact every student at every school every day. I, as your board representative, am very grateful and proud of all the Spirit volunteers, so thank you. Grant applications were due on January and the grant committee led by Colleen Berto is working with teachers and administration to evaluate over thirty grants, requesting over $240,000 of funds and finalization of the review process by the end of March. Their recommendations will be presented to the full Spirit Board on April 12th for vote and approval. The grant celebration is planned for April 20th, which is always a fun day for all. And I know the foundation has already had their grant day, so they've already had their fun. So this will be great. The fundraising and special events team led by Elise Butler and Courtney Turner are working on the highly anticipated spring event. This includes a ladies' night out on Thursday, May 19th, at Exmoor Country Club. The event is titled "In the Spirit of Style" and will be a fun evening highlighted by a spring fashion show and fabulous but limited raffle and auction items. This spectacular event is being chaired by Cassie Carver, Carolyn Amerman, and Kristin Lebra, excuse me, Kristin Lebrapoulis. The nominating committee was working diligently and many members of our community to put together a great slate for next school year's Spirit of 67 Board. The team led by Julian Goodfried focuses on creating a team that represents all of our district schools and taps into the many talents of our Lake Forest parent community. The slate will be presented at our April 12th meeting for approval. We look forward to sharing next year's team with you at the next BOE meeting. In sum, please mark your calendars. Slate of new Spirit of 67 Board members will be April 12th, Grant Day Celebration, April 20th, and Ladies Night Out, May 19th. That completes my report.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions for Rich? Seeing none, Emily, do you have an update on the APT?
I do. I have a brief update. March is a little bit shorter with spring break, but it's always nice to acknowledge all the fun activities and events going on all districts. The APT hosted their annual meeting on Thursday, March 10th. We were thrilled to welcome Heidi Stevens as our guest speaker and as well hear a district update, update from Dr. Montgomery. The new APT slate was voted on and we are excited to welcome all of our new APT leaders. All schools organized conference meals for the teachers and staff during conferences last week. The Food Services Committee organized food tastings all throughout March for National Nutrition Months. Students were offered Starfruit, Dragon Fruit, and other foods to sample, and Starfruit was a huge fan favorite. At our schools, Sheridan hosted a roller skating winter party. It was extremely fun night and enjoyed by everyone. Cherokee hosted its Winter Glow Party. It was very, very, very well attended and a lot of fun. At Everett, a big thank you to Rob Wugley, the Dean of Culture at DPM. He came out to this month's Everett APT meeting and shared information about the Social Institute and the available social media parent resources the program offers. The APT Executive Board would like to wish everyone a relaxing and wonderful spring break. And upcoming meetings, just as a reminder, the next meeting is April 13th. That's it.
Sorry, thank you, Emily. There were, there's a question regarding an action item coming up on the agenda, so apologies for that. Any, any questions for Emily on the APT? Seeing none, we'll move to action items. May I have a motion to approve the Finance and Operations Committee Charter?
So moved.
Thank you, Alice. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on the charter? Seeing none, Tiana, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the 2020-2021 audit?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions about the audit?
Jen, can you give us a, a quick, two-minute summary?
It's going to be hard to compete with Alice. I thought she did a very comprehensive report. Thank you, Alice. Yes, this is our 2021 final audit. This is an independent audit, which is required by the state of Illinois, meaning that these are independent eyes that come and put their, get into our books specifically. What they are looking for is whether or not the information that we've presented to the school board in our financial reports and information that we present are reflective of the actual information at hand. We did receive what's considered an unqualified opinion, meaning is the highest assurance that they can give to any entity that what they, what they've been presented is an actual representation of the information that did go on during the year. So it is filed, it does go in multiple places. As Alice noted, it is uploaded to the State Board of Education. It is also filed with the Regional Office of Education. And so there is two pieces. There's the audit, which is a more verbose kind of added words. If you have no other time, please read the management discussion and analysis, which is the first ten or fifteen pages. It'll give you a really good flavor. And then the second piece is called the annual financial report, which more accurately kind of mimics what our budget report looks like that goes to ISB. It's on the same reporting basis.
Thank you, Jen. Any other questions? Seeing none, Tiana, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 student fees?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on student fees as presented? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Great. I believe the motion carries. I would like to thank the Finance and Ops Committee and the administration for their work on the student fees and especially just make a call out for any community members who are watching about the change in particular to transportation. I think it is a family-friendly move and it's great to see that implemented for next year. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 108?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions about the second reading of Press Issue 108?
I ask that Press Issue 3:40 be pulled as we have not had time to fully discuss that.
Rebecca, do you want to speak a little bit more to that? Because that, yeah.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Okay, so I would actually recommend you do not pull it because you have to approve the policies within sixty or ninety days of press release. Otherwise, there's like bad things that happen. I don't know, a fine or something like that. I forget exactly what happens. But the only thing that's changed from the previous policy is footnotes, so it has not been adjusted based on any of the conversations that have happened. It stands as is and some footnotes have been changed. We did not put it on the first reading because there was still conversation, so essentially you waived your first reading, but I would recommend that you go ahead and approve it as it stands in the second reading tonight.
So I do have a question. Was, when the Policy Committee was reviewing these policies in the first place, it was a part of that review, correct?
I don't have it in front of me, but it was, this is a press policy update, so this is not an internal.
Right, so it was probably.
So I hope it was there.
Yeah.
And I think it was there, but I don't have that in front of me right now.
Yeah. We were just considering further changes beyond press and so at the last reading, those changes had not been fully deliberated, so you held it. Okay, thank you. And those changes are not happening, so it doesn't, that's moot.
So if and when you decide to change the policy internally, it will need to come back again to do that.
Would we need in our April meeting to do, take action on this again or no?
No, because essentially, wow, that came out very quickly. No, because essentially, you're, you waived your first reading and that's completely fine. So approving the second reading this evening will be sufficient for the policy.
Are there questions from the board about this?
I have a separate question unless you want.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to discuss Item 350, Administrative Personnel Other Than the Superintendent. And really because there's, it has, the discussion we've had for better part of the last few months has, has an immediate impact to the remaining items on the agenda. So I guess I asked Dr. Montgomery or you, Justin, to maybe summarize how we got to this point, how that is written and how we're pressing forward on that.
So I did speak to that at our February meeting when we did the first reading of this, but I'm happy to recap again. Is part of our ongoing work collaboratively with District 115 to review how we employ as a shared services model, what that looks, how is a employer, we assess and evaluate compensation for shared services employees. Both districts have lacked a defined policy on that. And so both District 115 and District 67 have been meeting in committees of the whole over the last couple of months to articulate and define a philosophy as it relates to shared services employee compensation, and that is reflected in Policy 3-50 that was voted on for the first reading in February. Are there any other questions?
Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Chief Operating Officer multi-year contract?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding this contract? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Deputy Superintendent Contract?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this contract? May I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Terrific. Congratulations, Jeff. May I have a motion to approve shared services compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on this action item from the board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Laverne?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Burnall?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tiana. May I have a motion to approve administrative compensation? And just for clarification, sorry, I shouldn't have made the motion. This action item, for the public who may be watching, these are not shared services employees. These are employees of District 67 exclusively. Now, may I have a motion to approve the administrative compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions about District 67 administration compensation? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tiana. Now, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions about the HR report? Now, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tiana. We'll move to our Consent Agenda. As a reminder, any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, which include approval of release of executive session minutes from August 24th, 2021, to January 25th, 2022; minutes of an executive session on February 22nd, 2022; minutes of a regular meeting and workshop on February 22nd, 2022; minutes of a joint special meeting on March 8th, 2022; and minutes of an executive session on March 8th, 2022.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to remove any items or any questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move to Free Move Information Act requests. There are two. Nathan Mahelich from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, the status is complete, and James Moorhead from the Moorhead Law Group, the status is also complete. We'll now move to our second opportunity for public participation. As a reminder, public comment is subject to Board Policy 2-230. This opportunity is for public comment about any topic. I am not going to reiterate our guidelines, given the number of folks who are here tonight. But at this point, are there any members of the public who'd like to address the board?
Hi, Colleen. Good to see you. I just wanted to make a comment about Dr. Shin's presentation. It was pretty alarming to see that many kids struggling from fifth to eighth grade emotionally. They're doing pretty good academically, which is good, but I'm, obviously, I'm not there yet. But I think that a big thing that we need to discuss moving forward is the use of cell phones, social media, and all of how that's involved in our kids. I feel like fifth grade is usually probably when most of the kids are getting cell phones, and then along with that comes everything else that I don't even know how to use. And I think a lot of parents probably don't really understand what a number of these apps do, not to put words in people's mouths or anything, but it would be really great if teachers, administration, and parents could kind of figure out a way to work together and really educate our fifth to eighth graders and so on the importance of safe social media behavior, and that that really can be harmful to a number of people. So, we think that needs to be really on the top of our priorities, getting our kids happy and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Come on. Great. So, seeing no more public comment, I will move to announcements for the evening. I've got a couple. On Friday, March 18th through Monday, March 26th, spring break begins on the 18th at the close of school, and on the 26th, school will reopen again. 28th? We will debate the calendar, and I'll provide an update when I go get my phone. On Tuesday, April 26, 2022, we will have our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM right here in the West Campus Boardroom. I'm pretty sure that date is correct. School resumes. For all of you who are planning when to send your kids back to school after spring break from watching this meeting, it's the 28th. With that said, may I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board meeting for March 15th, 2022?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.